Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission of the City of Moreno Valley. I now call this meeting to order on February 22, 2018 at 7:03 PM. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Commissioner Brian Lowell.
(Inaudible) 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 Thank you Commissioner Lowell.
May we now have the roll call? Commissioner Jeffrey Sims.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Lowell.
I am here.
Commissioner Ray Baker.
Here.
Vice Chairman Patricia Korsak.
Present.
Chairman Jeffrey Barnes. Excuse the absence. We're now going to move the approval of the agenda. I'm going, we're going to move item number three up to item number two. We're just going to refer to that order. And item four will be removed because we no longer need that ad hoc committee because of the city council meeting putting forth some commissioners on Tuesday. So those will be changes.
A motion to approve is amended.
I'll second.
All in favor? Oh, we have... We're good to go? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Onto our consent calendar, and at this time we have no items for consent. We're now going to move to the approval of minutes on the agenda. The Planning Commission regular meeting minutes of February 8, 2018. Recommendation: Approval of the minutes as presented. Do we have a motion or discussion?
A motion to approve is presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Did you have a vote?
Oh, we do have a vote on this one. Okay. Perfect.
There may be a glitch in the system because the chairman's not here tonight, so, and maybe there was some kind of a setting we were supposed to do. I'm not sure how to fix that, but maybe we just do a roll call vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Actually, it did kick in.
I think you have to...
My apologies, I think I have to click the stop. The vote.
It did kick in.
It did kick in. We're okay. Okay, the motion is passed. Moving along to the public comments. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission should complete and submit a speaker slip to the Planning Commission clerk. And those slips are in the back. There is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the commissioners. Please move to the front of the room when you hear your name called. Do we have any speaker requests?
Not at this time, no.
Have none? Okay. All right. Non-public hearing items. At this time we have no items, so we're going to move on to the public hearing items. Questions or comments from the public on a public hearing matter are limited to three minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. Those wishing to speak on any public hearing item should complete and submit a green speaker slip to the Planning Commission clerk. Once again, those are on the back table. Public hearing item number one. A proposed conditional use permit to operate a new smoke shop. Recommendation: Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution Number 2018-10. And now we'll have a staff report by Gabriel Diaz.
Thank you Vice Chair and Commissioners. You have PEN 17-00 ACP for a new smoke shop use within an existing commercial center. The proposed square footage is 1,605 square feet at the existing Ironwood Plaza Shopping Center located at 23940 Ironwood Avenue.
Mr. Diaz, we're having trouble hearing you. Is your microphone on?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
That's better.
Okay. The project is located at 23490 Ironwood Avenue, Suite E, at the northwest corner of Heacock Street and Ironwood Avenue. The applicant is Brian Albury. It's located within Council District 2. I do have some exhibits. The current zoning for the proposed use for the existing shopping center is neighborhood commercial. Surrounding the proposed... There we go. There's an aerial photo of the existing shopping center. The existing uses around the proposed smoke shop is to the north and west is an existing mobile home park and is zoned R-15 multifamily residential. To the east across Heacock Street is an Edison substation and single-family homes zoned R-5 single-family residential. And to the south is vacant land, existing single-family homes zoned R-5, and a Rite Aid pharmacy zone neighborhood commercial. We move on to the proposed smoke shop. The proposed smoke shop use is required, requires a conditional use application because their proposed use is located within 300 feet of a residential zone. The smoke shop proposes to sell cigarettes, cigars, and other tobacco-related products, vapes, vaping accessories, and lawfully permitted uses or products. The proposed hours of operation would be from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, and proposes one to three employees per shift. There will be no smoking inside the business. Here's how the inside of the business looks like. There's a zoning map. To access the proposed smoke shop, you will access it from driveways on Heacock Avenue or Heacock Street and Ironwood Avenue. As described into our municipal code, a smoke shop use requires additional parking in comparison to an existing general retail space. Therefore, the applicant submitted a parking analysis. The parking analysis evaluated current and future parking conditions at the center. The parking analysis concluded that there is sufficient parking for future and existing uses at the proposed center. A public notice was sent to all property owners, posted onsite, and published in the local newspaper. No public comment to report. I did not receive any calls. Environmentally, the project has been reviewed in accordance with the latest edition of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and staff has determined that the project will not result in the potential of significant effect on the environment and has determined the project qualifies as a Class 32 exemption, Section 15332 of the CEQA guidelines as an infill development. This is a change from the notice that went out. In the notice, we stated that this was exempt as a Class 1 categorical exemption per CEQA guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve Resolution Number 2018-10 and thereby certify the proposed conditional use permit qualifies for a categorical exemption in accordance with the CEQA guidelines, Section 15332 for infill development, and approve conditional use permit PEN 17-0090 for a new smoke shop use. This concludes staff presentation. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff? Brian?
Just for clarification, when you first introduced the item, I think you misspoke the address. Could you verify what the address was?
23940 Ironwood Avenue, Suite E.
Perfect, yeah, it was transposed.
Oh.
The other question I have is the parking. In the staff report, it says that there's a parking shortfall and the parking study was done. Could you give us a summary of that parking study and what's going to be done?
The parking, the parking study was prepared by TJW Engineering to evaluate the onsite parking, and they had previously, previously been the people that did the previous analysis for, there's a Bank of America ATM. We had that basis and we recommended that the applicant not necessarily hire TJW, but have somebody do an analysis for them, because there was one already on record. It did conclude that the peak demand weekday was, occurred from 4:30 PM to 5:30 PM, when a total of 143 parking spaces were occupied. There was also a Saturday peak demand that occurred between 1:00 PM, that occurred at 1:00 PM, and a total of 137 parking spaces were used. The overall parking capacity for the site is 254 spaces. Therefore, the site had peak occupancy of 56 and 54 percent. The existing parking provided is more than adequate to support re-tenanting of the vacant suites and re-establishing or establishing this proposed smoke shop. I did, I did go out and do a side visit, middle of the day, middle of the week, probably when a lot, you know, people are going to the 99 cent store and other places, and there is a lot of parking space that is vacant.
But per the city's standards, it's a parking shortfall, but per reality, there's not a parking shortfall.
Correct.
Thank you.
What else? Hey, anything else, Brian? Okay, would the applicant like to speak, please? The applicant here?
Hello. My name is Brian Albear. Thank you for listening to our project. Gabriel, thank you for the last couple of months. You've worked very hard keeping me on track as we go. We currently occupy the corner building, Ironwood Liquor, and we had an opportunity about a year ago. Landlord asked us if we would entertain the idea of a smoke shop. We said sure. We realized that there was more to it than that, so we're here tonight, and we had to do a traffic study as well. We think we can go hand-in-hand with our business, and we think it's a, it's a good addition to the neighborhood. If you have any questions.
Any questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you.
We'll now open up the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We do. We have Tom Behrens, apologize for the mispronunciation, and Rafael Brugeras.
Would Tom Behrens please step up to the podium?
Good evening, Planning Commission. I live across the street from this facility, or the smoke shop that they want to put in, and I have some concerns with the, the public safety aspect of it. I've been on the phone with the police chief and my councilmen, and somebody else here at City Hall about the, the increased crime that we have in the neighborhood from, a lot of it is from the homeless people that are encamped across the street over there. And I feel that a smoke shop would probably not be a real good thing because of the type of items that they sell. They're supposed to be tobacco-related items, but they're also used for other things. And, you know, I mean, if you look at the crime reports and stuff, I mean, almost every single day we either have an assault, a public intoxication, public disturbance, petty theft going on between Rite Aid and a liquor store and the different places there and stuff. And I just, I, I don't think that this is really a, a good business for that area in there at this time. There's just, there's just too much stuff going on, and, you know, the propositions that the, that the voters have passed have increased the amounts that make it where they can't arrest these people. They've, they just basically cite them and let them go. They can't get them back and stuff. I just, you know, I just don't think it's a really good idea at this time for, for that. And we have the liquor store there, which also sells tobacco products and stuff, so I just, I, I think it's, I think it's a detrimental safety issue to people there with the added people coming in and stuff. And I don't know if there's going to be any security involved with this, especially after hours in the evening and stuff, so, anyway, that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. I hope tonight this will be the last approval on a smoke shop in the City of Moreno Valley until we get a, a number of how many we already have in this city, okay? Now, I see smoke shops as we, as we drive throughout the city, but I want you to look at this number, 1,600 square feet. This is as big as a living space of a house that we're going to put this product in, on Heacock and Ironwood, okay? 1,600 square feet. That's pretty, I went to see it, and I was amazed to look inside the window how wide and how deep it is. And we're, and we're looking at cigarettes, okay? Products related to such lawfully, I mean, that's a lot of things. That could be anything, okay? The smallest one next to him was 800 square foot, and I went in there, there's some water, and he had his cramped in there. So I'm asking myself, what is going to be in this 1,600 square foot facility? Because you know, and I know, that we'll open for business to sell marijuana in the future. That's a fact. That's past. That's law in this city. What's going to happen when he opens or any new shop? Because this is not a new shop. This is just another shop that we're going to add to the City of Moreno Valley. I'm asking you Commissioners to ask the staff to give you numbers to find out how many we already have in the city. Because if you can't find that in this smoke shop, God knows that you can go to the other 12 and find what you're looking for. Really? Really? You know, I don't know if any of you's been there to see what it looks like, or I don't know if any of you's smoked and been in a smoke shop and see what's inside the smoke shop. It's just not cigarettes. There's a lot of other stuff that's in there. I hope this is the last one that we approve. If we do tonight, until we get our numbers straight and find out how many we have in each district. You know, we don't need 15 in one district and 10 in another and 30 in another. We don't need that. We have enough smoke shops in this city. And if you can't find it here, then go to Riverside, go to Banning, you know, go to Palm Springs. You go to many, you can go to Hollywood and get what you want there. Believe me or not, I bet you they have it all. Because it's an open society there. I'm, I'm pro-development. I love development. I would love him to have a business. But I just heard the last speaker, and you heard the last speaker, and we all did. We need to know what's right for the City of Moreno Valley.
Thank you, Mr. Brugeras. Would the applicant like to address any of the public comments?
We, we currently own four other businesses in Moreno Valley. We own the Chevron in Moreno Beach and Alessandro. We own other liquor stores. This is our first smoke shop. Our intent is not to open a marijuana, nor do we want to. Furthermore, it is in our lease that we are not allowed to convert the use in any way. We have an existing business there. We would like to expand our cigarette selection, and our intent is not to carry pipes or any of that. It is to carry cigarettes, cigars, vapes, hookah, and all those products. Ideally, 1,300 to 1,500 square feet would have been great. All they had was 1,600. That's all the landlord space they have. I'm very familiar with the shopping center. I'm there every day. That's about it.
Did you own an existing shop there? What shop do you own?
The Ironwood Liquor, the corner building.
Gotcha. And you can't take the use of the smoke shop and put it in the liquor store to kind of save space, or?
Well, for example, we're not a specialty in cigarettes or cigars, or, you know, we specialize in liquor. So our, majority of our stores, especially Ironwood Liquor, is liquor. We're not, we're not venturing into that, in that store.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioners' deliberations. Anyone want to say anything?
My concern was about the marijuana, about the possibility of selling marijuana there, but the applicant said that they have no intent of ever selling marijuana there, plus they have a lease that restricts them from doing so. If at some point in time their lease changed, would they have to come back in front of the Planning Commission or in front of the city to get a new CUP to change it to allow marijuana sales?
Looks like our, our attorney's reaching for the thing, but I'll start with that. The item later for you on the agenda tonight is to put forward some land use regulations. In the absence of any land use regulations, all marijuana activities are prohibited in the city, so I'd be, I guess, better prepared to answer the question depending on how the item later on the agenda goes forward.
Well, hypothetically, if things go in the way that pot shops are now allowed in the city, the general consensus would be they would have to come back and apply for a new permit or a new CUP to allow that kind of sale. It's just not automatic if they own a shop or something that they can start selling.
That's correct. If everything goes according to the staff recommendations, you would not be able to operate a cannabis business in the city without regulatory permits, specific land use, separate CUP for it as well, so there's, this, this application would not relate in any way to that. They wouldn't be able to convert it lawfully. They would have to come in as an entirely new business and get, seek the cannabis permits and CPs.
In, in the past, we've talked about smoke shop regulations, and we had a very long discussion about what is drug paraphernalia. It's basically, you know, when you see a kind of a situation. Given that they're selling some paraphernalia that could be misused, is that going to be an issue if they open up this smoke shop and they want to sell other methods of, of using tobacco that could be misused? Is that going to null and void the CUP?
Most of that's regulated by state law, and so as far as our office is concerned, we wouldn't be enforcing that type of, those types of regulations if they're carrying certain types of pipes that we might commonly use in a different, for a different product than tobacco. There's, that's not something that we're regulating.
If I may, to, to just clarify one thing. When we did bring the smoke shop discussion for you, there was some modifications to Title V of our municipal code that do affect the, the business license that are issued, and there are some provisions within there where we can revoke a, a business license based on the, the certain types of activity. We typically in the, in the Community Development Department enforce the regulations in Title IX, which is the planning and zoning regulations, but I do want to make sure that you understand there is a, a separate title, Title V of our code, that does have some provisions that speak to what you're talking about.
So given the two speakers tonight that spoke out against this shop, if they see something that is not copacetic and is kind of shady, how would they contact, or how would they contact the city, or who would they contact to file a complaint? Would it just be the police department? Would it be the city?
They could contact the code enforcement group, which is out of the Community Development Department, so they would contact the department we are, are in. If they wanted to contact the police department, they could do that as well, and those sorts of complaints can be coordinated or carried over to the code enforcement department depending on what the nature of the complaint is. We would typically send somebody out to, to investigate, and depending on what they find, there could be a notice of violation, a notice of correction of some sort, or there could be a citation depending on what the activity that's found on the site would be, so.
Thank you.
Do we know where the closest smoke shop is to this? How far away?
I don't have that information this evening.
No.
I, I drove around the area. I didn't, there is no commercial center that close to this. This kind of seems isolated north of Ironwood, so I, I didn't see, our code, I think, restricts another smoke shop within 600 feet, and there is no other smoke shop within 600 feet.
Yeah, I don't think so. That's my neighborhood. I go to that shopping center a lot. I'm one of those 4:30 to 5:30 people that have no trouble parking and go to the 99 cent store. So, but I didn't think there was anything else in the neighborhood, so it's not that there would be a huge amount in one area.
Any other questions? Mr. Sims?
So, on the issue of the security, I, I don't know if a smoke shop attracts nefarious type people more than the liquor store or the supermarket or 99 cent store, so I, I'm not so sure that that, how big of a deal that is, but at the end of the day is, is, I would assume, and this may be more of a question to the applicant, but due to familiarity with the, with the, the space that they're leasing out from that shop or shopping center, is there 24/7 security provided by the owner of the, of the shopping center? I don't know that. There's not. Okay. And then, I guess, as far as, so anyhow, I, I mean, that would be nice if they had, had security there, but anyhow, but at the end of the day, I get, the, the other issue that was brought up was, you know, the, how many smoke shops are. I guess at the end of the day is, is, this seems more of a niche business where it's more community-based catering to a certain demographic and certain, in certain geographics as well. And I personally, from my standpoint, I, I would allow that to be market-driven. If, if there's a saturation of smoke shops, the lesser-used smoke shops will go out of business. And so, I don't know if that's the planning commission's purview to really regulate that, that type of a situation, so anyhow, that's my comments.
Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. A motion that we approve Resolution Number 2018-10 and thereby certify that PEN 170090 a conditional use permit for a new smoke shop qualifies for categorical exemption in accordance with CEQA guidelines, Section 15332 for infill development, and also approve PEN 17-0090 a conditional use permit for a new smoke shop, subject to the conditions approved included as Exhibit A.
Seconded.
Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, moving along. We're going to move up to item number two on the agenda that we moved up. It was formerly item three. It's proposed tentative tract map 37369 subdividing 1.6 acres into seven lots, including a variance for reduced setbacks and an administrative plot plan for the addition of a garage. And the staff recommends that we approve Resolution Number 2018-11. And the staff report will be given by Julia Descartes.
Good evening, Vice Chair Korsak and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Julia Descartes, Associate Planner on this project. The item before you is PEN 17-0128, a tentative tract map 37369, Pen 170129, a variance, and Pen 170130, which is actually an administrative approval. The applicant, the applicant is seeking approval for a tentative tract map 37369 to subdivide 1.6 acres, which include two parcels, into seven single-family residential lots ranging from 9,073 square feet to 11,100... to eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-eight square feet, and a variance for the reduced setbacks and a non-conforming garage. The site is currently developed with seven residential units constructed prior to the city's municipal code and the specific Plan 204 under Riverside County regulations. All of the proposed lots exceed the four thousand eighty-square-foot residential lot size required in the specific Plan 204. Several of the proposed lots will require an approval for a variance as they do not comply with the residential setback requirements of the specific Plan 204. The development standards require a five-foot side setback where both of the units on proposed lots three and four have less than the required five feet. Currently, they have about three and a half feet, which is one and a half feet short of what they're required. Lot seven will require a variance for the side street setback on Eucalyptus, where the existing dwelling is about two and a half feet short of the required fifteen feet on that side of the street. Where the development standards in the specific plan are silent, the plan defaults to the city's municipal code. And the city's municipal code requires that all single-family residential units are constructed to have a two-car garage. On lot six, there is currently a one-car garage, which meets the requirements in the current zoning. However, due to the existing layout of the site, a remodel or a development of a new garage is not feasible for this site. Proposed lot one does not have a garage currently, but at this location, there is ample room to construct a garage. So we have an administrative plot plan that we'll be approving. Should you approve this map tonight, we'll approve the administrative approval for the garage to be constructed on that lot. Except where I've just discussed, all the other requirements for single-family development within the specific Plan 204 have been met. The site will take access from a private driveway on Eucalyptus Avenue. The map will be required to provide reciprocal access to the parcel fronting on the northwest corner. That is not a part of this project. All parking will be on-site in the individual driveways, and all the resident owners will maintain the private driveway. The utility pole in the driveway is required to be relocated or undergrounded, and the applicant will work with Southern California Edison to accomplish this. All of the surrounding areas within the specific Plan 204 with the same residential zoning that allows both single-family and multifamily units. The project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as a Class 32 categorical exemption for infill, Section 15332. The project was posted on the site, in the newspaper, and sent to all property owners within three hundred feet. To date, I have received two phone calls regarding the project. Both of those callers just wanted to know what the project was and didn't give me any feedback either way of how they felt about the project. They just wanted information. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve Resolution 2018-11 and certify that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as a Class 32 categorical exemption. Approve PEN 17-0128 for the tentative track map, PEN 17-0129 for the variance. And this concludes staff's presentation. And the applicant and myself are here to answer any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions of staff? Brian?
Could you give us a little background as to what's going on here? We have a series of houses that are being subdivided onto their own lots. So currently, there are seven houses or seven dwelling units sitting on one lot?
Currently, there's two lots. And let me go back. Well, actually, that's a good picture. There's two lots here. It's divided about in the middle. So there's three, four lots on the right side of the screen. And then there's the three homes that are on the left side, the very first home adjacent to. Eucalyptus is not a part of this project. And in the past, in this area, especially during the county days, there were a lot of areas like this where they built multiple houses on each lot. And so the applicant at this time owns both of the parcels. And so they would like to subdivide so that they could sell the lot, the houses individually. Right now, if they sell the one lot on the right, all four houses go with it.
So it's basically a non-conforming situation right now?
It's not non-conforming in the specific Plan 204 because you can't have multiple family on one lot.
Gotcha.
So it is allowed in the zone currently and would have been allowed in the county's code, too.
And then a point of clarification in the staff report. It says there's seven single-family residences. But on the tentative track map number 22, it says the existing site contains seven multifamily detached dwellings.
I, sorry. Well, they are single-family, but it isn't a multifamily design right now. They are detached units, so they're not.
But the individual dwelling units are for single-family. They're not multifamily. Okay. So the tentative map is not correct on that specifically. Thank you.
Mr. Sims?
Are all of the individual houses currently with their own water and sewer, sewer connection and water meter?
Yes.
And electrical and all that?
Yes, they'll have the power poles go along the back.
And the only other question would be for fire with the substandard side yard. If there's an event that requires access to the back and there's, I mean, three and a half feet, I don't know what it takes to maneuver a man or a person in a hose and whatever has to happen. But is that sufficient with a wall, with a fence?
I'll defer to the fire marshal.
Adrienne Reinsen, Fire Marshal. Because these are existing dwellings, there is no way for us to retroactively enforce provisions. If they were to build anything additional on this site, they would have to comply with our regulations in code today.
Well, I still didn't answer the question. I mean, from an actual, I mean, thank you for the answer. Just to elaborate, physically, is it possible to get back there between the side yard? Imagine if there's a block wall, there's a block wall between. I don't know if there's block walls or chain link fences or whatnot. But if there's a fence between the two yards, the side yards, so you have three and a half on one side, three and a half or whatever it is on the other, can a person with a hose or whatever that needs to get through there with equipment get through to the back of the structure?
We certainly could. Today's regulations actually allow for three-foot setbacks because of the fire sprinkler regulations. If this had been under our regulations to begin with, it would have required at least the five foot. So it is possible, but it does present some challenges.
We approved a track map over by Walmart off of Eucalyptus, Furcalypus over by Supertarget at Nason Marina Beach. And they're single-family detached, and they have three-foot side yard setback. That beast.
You're right. I can't remember, but if you say so, I believe you.
But they're fire sprinkler, which is the big difference.
Well, this, I mean, it's not, the concern is it's an existing condition. I just, now we're going to create legal lots, so anyhow.
Anyone else? Would the applicant like to come up and speak? Would Ed Romero be here?
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Steve Ritchie. I'm the representative for Ed Romero. He's here as well. I'm with Land Engineering Consultants, so I did the tentative map for them. We've reviewed the conditions. We're in agreement with what's being asked for on this project. I'm pretty much here to answer any questions. If you had any additional questions related to some of the setback things, maybe I can address some of those. But maybe just a clarification on the setbacks. I think the three and a half-foot setbacks are along the southerly line, which is not a proposed lot line. It's an existing lot line. So regardless of whether, there's no new lot lines that are being proposed that would have less than a five-foot setback. That's just a condition that maybe back when these homes were built, I don't know, that they had the best survey information on how to, you know, set fences and property lines at that time. I think these homes were all built in the 50s. I think nineteen fifty-eight is what I've come up with. So they've been around for a long time. The other variance off of Eucalyptus is only due to the additional dedication that's being requested. So it does leave us slightly short out there. But that is only because of the dedication that we're a little bit less. Otherwise, the existing right-of-way would have been giving us the adequate setback. The garage that was requested is actually a site where there was an existing garage that burned down years ago. So it's really just a replacement of a garage that was there on the site. Any other questions? I'm here to answer.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll open up the public hearing on this. And it looks like we have one speaker. We do. We have Rafael Brugeras.
Good evening, once again, chair, commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. I went to this site, and it took me a while to find the address because there's four numbers and there's four on this side, three on this side. And then I found the address in the middle of the lot. And I looked behind it. I'm thinking, you know, one and a half, 1.6 acres. So it's the whole thing. And I'm glad for the question that Mr. Lo asked because I figured it out, what he wants to do with the lot. Okay? And as he devises them in the future, they're a pretty good-sized lot between nine and eleven thousand square foot. The question that I didn't hear, get asked, the homes that are there now, are they homeowners or these are renters on these lots? Because when he devised this, devised a lot, he's going to have an opportunity to sell them. He's going to sell them to the homeowners that are there or to the renters or to future buyers. See? And are they going to tar the entrance? Because there's only one way in and one way out. Okay? That's one thing also there. So I'm happy for those that finally get their own lots. They can do whatever they like, you know, put their little fences and take care of their own little property. That's a beautiful thing there. And for those that want to do upgrades, you know, that's a good thing, too. However you decide to do tonight, just make sure, as we will mention it, that the fire trucks can get in and the fire trucks can get out. Because that's important. Because at the end of the lot, there's a fence, then there's another property. I thought it was going to be that, but it's not. So that was only my concern when I got there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would the applicant like to address any of those issues? You don't have to, if you don't want to. Okay, that's fine. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and begin our deliberations. Mr. Sims?
This seems to be a similar application to what we did that was done over on Alessandro, out closer between Moreno Beach and Redlands Boulevard, where there was a cluster of homes, pre-existing homes, and wanted to subdivide the lot to create legal lots. So it looks like it's appropriately conditioned to get it done. And, you know, I would imagine that the situation, if Mr. Romero owns all the houses and he's renting those out, if he goes to sell them, that the tenants would have an opportunity to become a homeowner if they so choose to be so. Or they'll have some kind of rental termination agreement, you know, or termination clause in their agreement that would be amenable to owner and the tenant.
On the variance, on the side yard variances on lots three and lot four, it looks like the existing fence is farther away from the house than the property line, which leaves about a foot gap between the property line and the fence. Is that something that's going to be rectified on the condition saying they have to pull the fence back to the property line? Or has that fence been there long enough that they actually have like a prescriptive right to that portion of land?
We could take a look at that through the plan check process. I, you know, if it's up by a foot, I mean, I don't know how, you know, when we get to the actual standpoint of plan checks on it, we can look at that and.
I forgot what the rules are. But if the fence has been there for twenty, thirty years, which it seems like it has been, then that's the assumed property line. And if that is the case, then you wouldn't have 3.6 feet to the property line. You'd have more like 4.6 or even closer to five feet. So the variance might not necessarily be needed.
Okay, yeah, if it's an open fence, there's some flexibility. That could possibly be in the setback. So it would probably stay where it is.
Mr. Baker?
I think this gives us an opportunity to kind of square this way with the property owner there. Too bad it's gone on like, what, fifty years or whatever it's been. So I would move that we go move it forward with it.
Is there any other comments first?
I can make a motion if you like.
Okay, there's no other comments. I will welcome a motion.
I move that the planning commission hereby approves Resolution 2018-12 and thereby certify that this item is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act as a Class 32 categorical exemption from CECL guidelines, Section 15332, infill development, and also approve PEN 17-0129, variance.
Excuse me, mine says it's Resolution 2018-11. Does that match up with yours? You read one, two.
There's two of one there, one one and one two.
Yeah, this one below it.
And one one. So does it include both resolutions?
Let me redo that again. So we got it on the record, right? Okay, recommend that the planning commission approve Resolution 2018-11 and also 2018-12 and thereby certify that this item's exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Act as a Class 32 categorical exemption, CECL guidelines, Section 15332, as an infill development, and also approve PEN 17-0129, variance, and also approve tentative parcel map 37369, PEN 17-0128, subject to conditions of approval and attachment of Exhibit A.
And the motion is approved, four yeses. Okay, moving along. The next will be the commercial cannabis land use regulations. I noticed there's only one speaker slip filled in on this? Correct. I see there's a lot of people out there. So if any of you want to speak, you need to go over to the side table, fill in a slip, and bring it to the clerk. Okay, I just thought we anticipated that. Thank you. Okay, on this one, the staff recommends that the planning commission approve Resolution Number 2018-09. And the staff report on this will be by Mark Gross.
Well, good evening, Chair Korzek and members of the planning commission. Tonight, we're looking at a draft land use ordinance that is being presented to the planning commission for regulation of commercial cannabis activities in Moreno Valley. And that includes dispensaries, testing, cultivation, manufacturing, micro businesses, and distribution centers. And we have definitions for all of those uses in the proposed ordinance that was part of your staff report as a draft. Now, a little bit of background that I want to provide on the actual subject. The city council directed staff originally to review and provide input on how the city can regulate and control cannabis business operations and address legalization. can regulate and control cannabis business operations, and address legalization of cannabis products that are included in Proposition 64, which is the state proposition that allowed for cannabis uses. So what we had a chance to do is, there's a couple of areas that we needed to, that the city needed to pull together if we were going to move forward with cannabis operations or allowing for cannabis operations, and one of those was a regulatory ordinance, another was the land use ordinance, which of course is before you this evening. Now, the regulatory ordinance was actually passed late last year, and the state, just to give you a little bit more background, I'm sure a lot of people know about this already, but the state, as of January 1st, is issuing commercial cannabis licenses, and they provide for these licenses only if the local jurisdiction's permits are secured first, so any licenses or conditional use permits would have to be secured. Now, the ordinance includes five different land use districts and 26 conditionally permitted cannabis uses citywide, and that's all required in enclosed permanent structures. And I want to run through exactly what we are looking at as far as these 26 uses that we're looking at as far as the amount. So we have six different cannabis operations that we're looking at, and starting off with dispensaries, with dispensaries, we're looking at 10 of those that may be allowed. They would be allowed, and I want to also give you information on where they would be allowed as far as the zoning districts. And for dispensaries, that would be community commercial, neighborhood commercial, and business park mixed-use zones. For testing, there would be a maximum of two that may be allowed within the business park, business park mixed-use, and the business park and the neighborhood commercial, or, excuse me, let's go back and do a redo on that. The testing is a maximum of two, and that's in the business park mixed-use and light industrial zones, is what I wanted to say. For cultivation and manufacturing, there would be five each that would be allowed, five cultivation and five manufacturing, and that may be allowed within the business park, the business park mixed-use, and the light industrial zoning districts. For micro businesses, which are kind of a mix of dispensaries, cultivation, and possibly manufacturing, there we're looking at a maximum of two that may be allowed within the business park mixed-use zones. And finally, for distribution centers, a maximum of two may be allowed in any of the five zoning districts that would be allowing commercial cannabis activities. And so we're looking at the five zoning districts, and I'll kind of mention them here, just so you're aware of these five districts. We kind of mentioned them here as far as the individual, but here we're talking about neighborhood commercial, community commercial, business park, business park mixed-use, and light industrial. Those are the five areas that are open for these different uses, as we've indicated. So the ordinance, I want to talk a little bit about the ordinance, and then we're going to get into the map that is provided here. In fact, we have a number of maps that we've included, so we will be getting into those here in just one sec. But what I want to talk a little bit about is just the ordinance itself. The ordinance does provide for 14 definitions, and these are all consistent with Title V, the regulatory ordinance. It also provides for specific zoning districts, as we've indicated, as we've mentioned here. It provides for conditional use permit requirements for all 26 proposed uses. It provides for general development standards. It provides for land use buffers, which we're going to get into in just a minute or two, and it also provides for grounds for revocation of cannabis businesses. Again, since this is required under a conditional use permit, it would be coming before this body, before the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would have a chance to review those permits and approve those permits. And if those permits, if we get, if there are violations of those permits, whether they be from just, you know, conditions of approval or operations, they can come back, and there are revocation proceedings that are included in the ordinance itself. So at this particular time, I want to talk a little bit more about where some of the cannabis operations would be allowed. And I'm going to start with the maps that you see. There'll be about a series of five maps, and they go from very general to very specific. And so here, we start off with a very specific map. This is the zoning map of the city, so you see all of the colors there. It includes zoning for every single property within the city. So that's the first one that we wanted to provide. Now, this next map is just providing for possible opportunities or possible land that would be included in, or land, I should say, that would be included in the community commercial and the neighborhood commercial zones in the city. This does not include any specific plans, and we'll talk a little bit more about specific plans in a moment, because we've added a little bit more information to some of these maps. These maps that were originally in your packet were just included areas that were not including specific plans, but as you'll see on the last map, we'll get into the specific plans and how they work. So we talked about community and neighborhood commercial areas, and these are potential areas that, again, could be for dispensary-type uses. So this next map that we're showing is actually showing land within the business park, the business park mixed-use, and the light industrial zones, and again, not including specific plans here. But in these particular areas, this could be possibilities for areas, like we talked about, testing, manufacturing, and cultivation. This next map actually is providing, it does show all of the different zones that is allowing for cannabis activities, and what this does is it provides for potential acres and areas where all 26 commercial cannabis businesses could locate. But I want to say that it's stating, it shows that, but this does not include any of the information that we have in our ordinance. Now, the ordinance is going to include buffers and other requirements, and so this is just showing you the potential areas that we have. Now, for this next map, this is actually getting into the specifics. Here, we actually include the 600-foot buffer that is a requirement of the ordinance, and that's consistent with state regulations, and what we're talking about, and you can see the little bubbles all along and all around these sensitive land uses. And again, this is consistent with state regulations, so there is a regulation, 600 feet for cannabis uses, and they would have to be 600-foot distance, and we're talking about items such as public and private schools, daycare centers, youth centers, arcades, and these, all of these items that you see up here were all queried through the business license division records. Now, when the 600-foot buffer is factored in, you have approximately 632 areas eligible for dispensary uses, 663 acres that is eligible for cultivation, manufacturing, and testing, 44 acres possibly for micro businesses, and 1,251 acres for distribution centers. And the reason for the large amount for the distribution centers is the fact that, again, distribution centers would be allowed in every one of the five zoning districts that are allowing for cannabis operations. So what this map also includes is it includes specific plan areas, and I want to talk a little bit about the specific plan areas, because we have additional cannabis sites and acreage that was, that is provided, that could be provided and is provided in specific plans, and we show on this map like zoning areas, and some of these, you know, they're like zoning areas, they allow for where the commercial cannabis is allowed in our ordinance. And these are also, all of these specific plans that we include on this map are actually deferring to municipal code standards. And so we have specific plans in our city that either defer to the standards, and they provide for everything, they just defer into the municipal code, and so the permitted uses is based on the municipal code standard. So if the ordinance is approved, then these specific plans would go, all of these uses or these areas could actually defer to the municipal code and to what is allowed under cannabis operations. But there are others, there are other specific plans that we did not include here that have their own permitted use tables and their own standards, and those we didn't include because they would have to actually come in for a specific plan amendment to allow for those types of uses. But what this does and what this shows is when you factor in all of the specific plan areas that are possible, the ones that are actually, the ones that are actually tying over to the municipal code, you're looking at approximately another 200 acres that is possible for primarily commercial dispensary operations. So that's just a little bit of information on the maps themselves, and I want to talk just a little bit about some of the other information, such as the environmental document for this project. The cannabis ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and that's in conjunction with State Senate Bill 94. That's the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act that exempts, this act is exempting the adoption of an ordinance by a local jurisdiction that requires discretionary permits or licenses. Now, the ordinance is requiring a city license and a conditional use permit in this case, so that would allow for the appropriate environmental review and determination on a case-by-case basis. So as this body has a chance to review conditional use permits, and the staff works on the review of the environmental document, they would be able to determine through CEQA what the appropriate environmental document would be. Now, the, there was notice on this particular item. It was published in the Press Enterprise newspaper, and that was back on February the 11th. The proposed cannabis ordinance, and I, before I get into a few other items, I did want to say that I did receive six calls, actually in total, on the item, and most of the callers were determining if their property, you know, they were looking at certain property to see if certain cannabis operations were allowed by this particular ordinance, if this ordinance were to come into play and it gets approved. So they were really interested in locations of where cannabis operations possibly could go. We talked a little bit about the notice, and I do want to say and kind of end with, the cannabis ordinance is now requiring consideration tonight and recommendation by the Planning Commission, and that would be followed by City Council deliberation and action on all required municipal code changes. And we're looking at possibly getting this on, at least our goal possibly would be getting it on for the middle of March to a City Council meeting sometime, possibly on the 20th, I think is what we're looking at. But will that determine, that will be determined based on what we go through this evening. So that concludes staff's report, and we're able to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, if I may just take a second. Mark, can I have the clicker? I know Mark did an excellent job going through this in some detail, but because it's an important issue that you guys are considering tonight, and the public is also focusing on some of these maps to possibly make some decisions, I just want to go back real quickly over these and just kind of show a little bit of a focus by the uses, and to also indicate that some of these maps were not included in your staff report that was published last week. Some of these maps are newer, and were just produced for this meeting this evening. So the first one I would start with, all of the red areas here, as Mark has indicated, are the community commercial zones and neighborhood commercial zones in which dispensaries and distribution facilities would be allowed. So if anybody is interested in just which specific uses could occur in here, it's just dispensaries and just distribution facilities. While there's a lot of sites being shown up there, the number of recommended dispensaries is limited to 10. So only 10 dispensaries could occur in all those red areas. Some of them could be more concentrated, some of them may be spread out, we don't know where they're going to come in. And as far as distribution facilities, we're recommending two distribution facilities somewhere in all of those red areas. The light blue areas represent the business park, business park mixed-use, light industrial areas, and as Mark indicated, these are the areas in which cultivation, manufacturing, testing laboratories, and micro businesses, and distribution facilities can be located. The one thing I'd like to point out is the micro businesses, which we're only recommending two, would only be limited to those areas that are designated as business park mixed-use, which is only a small portion of this, and I apologize, we don't have a map that highlights just the business park mixed-use, but we could drill down on that if anybody in the public wanted to call and ask specifics about that. The number of manufacturing locations would be five, cultivation sites would be five, testing laboratories is two, micro businesses is two, and again, distribution is two citywide, and those two could be either in the blue area here or in the red areas that I showed before. This area is just showing collectively all of those blue and red areas, and as Mark indicated, we've overlaid the specific plans, and this is the new information, that as we drilled down and we looked at the specific plan provisions, those, only those specific plans that have references to neighborhood commercial or community commercial were the ones that we wanted to make sure were clear to you and to clear to the public, and we will be making clear to the City Council, who will be the ultimate decision-making body on this. We wanted to show those collectively. The other thing that I wanted to show is if you look at this map here, there is an acreage table up in the top right corner, and so it gives you a sense of how much acreage is available in each of those zoning districts. And then, once we apply the next map, which is the restricted areas, the 600-foot buffer, if you toggle between that matrix on this page and the matrix on the next page, you'll see that in each of the categories, the amount of acreage goes down. In some, it goes down considerable, in some, it's a little more negligible, but in all, there's, is a reduction in the amount of sites that would be available once you apply the buffers. The other thing that you can see, if you toggle between this map here and this map here, is the amount of color. So the amount of color that shows up on this map, you can see disappears somewhat, you know, it's a little bit difficult because you see a lot of pink up there, but the brighter colors disappear and gives you a visual representation of where the areas start to fall out because of those restrictions. So just wanted to make sure that people understood what the maps were trying to convey, and I think Mark did an excellent job in the presentation. The other stuff that's in your staff report and that's available for the public to look at is the resolution, which documents all the reasons why we're doing this, and then it goes into specific modifications that we'll be adding to our municipal code, and if you have any questions on any of those specifics, we're very happy to answer those tonight. The last thing I'll say is this has been a yeoman's effort to try and put all this stuff together in a short period of time. In addition to Mark, the staff behind me, our city attorney's office, and others have been very active in making sure this is all pulled together, so we are here this evening to answer any questions. Thank you very much.
Any questions of staff? Go ahead.
So, thank you. Mark, you always seem to get the tough, the tough issues to present, so. So I don't really understand some of the nuances between distribution and micro business and dispensary, because I don't, but I guess I kind of get the sense of what those are. So I'm assuming that the dispensaries are the place where people can just come in by product, off the street.
That would be correct.
So, and then like a... So and then like a micro business would be like going to Hangar twenty-four and you can go see how they make it and how they grow it. And you could just make a day of it, come there. You couldn't do sampling, though.
Correct. There would be no sampling. In fact, in any of the uses, there wouldn't be anything associated with that.
But you could see the whole kind of food chain of how this stuff is grown, packaged, sold, that kind of thing. The distribution, I guess, is, I have no idea of what, but it seems like when you say distribution, I think of logistics, so you see truckloads, is this coming in in boxes? Or what is this? And it goes out to the dispensaries? Or how is that, what is that kind of situation?
Well, as far as the distribution goes, it's really providing for, it could be providing for the procurement or transportation of cannabis or cannabis products between entities that really are licensed by the state of California. So they would all be licensed situations.
And I get the hierarchy of how you take the twenty-six potential land, potential CUPs and that would have to go in and they would, there's more of the cash-and-carry, walk in, get product and walk out type thing. So that makes sense. I, how did the twenty-six come about? Is that a, how was that picked as a number?
Let me try and address that. First, before I address the number, I want to provide one clarification. In your description of the types of uses, you described the micro businesses as a place where people could go and see how the product is grown and then packaged and then manufactured. I'm not sure if you meant that literally or not, but I wanted to point out that there are actually restrictions based on the state regulations and in our municipal code that would restrict the public from getting into these facilities. So our regulations are not intended to make these facilities a place where the public would go in and try and see or learn. They're actually intended to be very secure sites, just to make sure that we minimize that.
So what is, so then help me understand what the difference is between the dispensary and the micro business.
The micro business is a place where there is actual cultivation going on. There is manufacturing, and there is some sort of a distribution or a dispensary. But you have to have three actual cannabis activities going on in the location, except for testing. Testing has to be done completely remote from any of those types of activities. So you would go into those places, but not with the intent to roam around and see how things are being done. So that's the clarification I'm trying to make. But you could see in a micro business, all of those things being done. The other thing with the micro business is the size of the facility is limited based on how much cultivation could be done. It is limited in particular. With regard to the twenty-six locations, we have tried to identify what a city of fifty-two square miles with population of two-hundred-and-nine, two-hundred-and-ten thousand people would need. We're also looking at the amount of available land that is out there for this and then also what the market demands are. A lot of this will be dictated just based on market demand. So even if we put twenty-six out there and only five come in, we'll know that our number was maybe too high. And if we put out twenty-six and fifty-two come in and we know we're only halfway there, that'll be an indicator. So we are testing the market rather than oversaturating it, saying that you can put one of these types of activities anywhere in the city. We started with a place to kind of control the number. We based it on research we've done with other jurisdictions. There are some jurisdictions that are not allowing any types of dispensaries possibly. There are some that are focusing on cultivation. There are some that have opened up the doors similar to us and are allowing all of these. But we did a lot of research, and so we tried to compare ourselves to what's going on in the industry. And knowing that most likely as a new industry, we're going to have to make some adjustments somewhere down the road. But right now, this is the starting point. We started at one point with twenty-two. And then the idea of distribution, we thought that we'd missed that because distribution you're asking is a function that is needed to move product from one of the uses to the other. And somebody may be interested in setting up a place where they are kind of the middleman. So we introduced two more to the twenty-two that we had. And then the idea of micro business, which is a new entity in itself, we introduced that and added two of those. And that's how we got from twenty-two to twenty-six. But our number has not fluctuated any more than the twenty-two to the twenty-six range.
Okay. Thanks. So going on with, I appreciate the clarification on that. The other, when I read through the, when I was looking through the resolution, so I'm not going to read all the wherethes, but I'm going to read the pertinent ones that caught my eye. So I read whereas in November twenty sixteen, Prop sixty-four was approved by voters of California. So that was the Adult Use Marijuana Act. So there was a majority, it passed. Then Governor Brown on June twenty-seventh of twenty seventeen, they amended it, amended the Prop sixty-four apparently. And he signed the Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act. Then I read down three more wherethes. Then it goes, the Plan Commission, and that's us, we're recognizing that regulated licensed commercial cannabis activity is permitted in the state even though the Federal Controlled Substances Act, various sections classifies marijuana as a Schedule One drug and makes it unlawful under federal law. So I, this is, I just don't know how to square that. So here we have the state saying it's okay. We're about, we are already adopted through amendments to Title X of the municipal code, gave the city regulatory authority to license and regulate the sale of all this stuff of the cannabis activities. Now we're going, now the Plan Commission is considering entitlement process for actual specification of location. But how do we as planning commissioners in the city regulate when even though our state says it's okay, but our United States say it's illegal? I just, how do we square that?
Let me describe the purpose of the whereas statements in the resolution. The intention in a resolution is to make sure that we're doing this in the light of day. So the whereas statements are basically reflecting those facts that are true. The language was also modeled after other resolutions and other ordinances that we examined at other jurisdictions. So we're trying to be consistent with what other jurisdictions have done in the whereas statements and the findings they have made. It is a, an interesting dilemma when you talk about what the federal regulations are restricting and what the state is allowing. But then there's power that's vested in a city to make its own regulations in the light of day. And this is where I'll turn it over to the City Attorney to help me communicate that part.
Thank you. I think the short answer to your question is you can't. Federal law does continue to prohibit and schedule marijuana as a Schedule One drug, and it's prohibited under federal law. Our state and a number of other states have decided that, they feel differently about it. And cities that follow state law, many of them have joined on with the state. If you're concerned about city liability or personal liability is to the feds, city's not going to be engaging in any of these uses. So there's really no risk from the federal government to the city simply by identifying and allowing, identifying where these uses are going to be permitted or not under state law. We're just following state law guidelines on that. But to the operators of these facilities, they remain under a cloud of enforcement under federal law. And that's going to depend on the administration at the time as far as how proactive they're going to be about enforcement of that or not. But how do we square the two? We can't. Currently, they're in conflict.
Okay. And thank you for that. And then the other question is, has staff, I guess it goes to public policy as far as benefits to the city. Does the benefits to the city outweigh the necessity to approve these things? So for instance, if we, you know, with, I would assume there's sales tax or some, there's some kind of benefit that comes to the city by approving these, an additional type business. So there must be revenues. Has there been any kind of statistical analysis or economic analysis that would demonstrate that the benefits from revenue increases to the city would offset any of the costs that would come for enhanced regulation, staff, you know, investigatory enforcement from the, or cops and whatnot to make sure that this stuff, if this type of business and ordinance is approved, that it's a cost neutral to the city?
So this is more on the regulatory ordinance side of things. And maybe we need to mention how those are, there's two different ordinances at play here. The regulatory ordinance that was already passed by the council and, you know, may be amended in the future. That ordinance is what allows the business to operate. Think of it like a business license. But there's an application process, it's, the owners are screened. They have a number of requirements on them. The application fee is quite substantial on that because it's designed, as you said, to cover all of those costs, including additional staffing, security, police, code enforcement. So all those things have been taken into consideration under the regulatory framework. This ordinance that's before the Planning Commission is subject only to the land use aspect of it. So if you think of it in terms of the cannabis business operator permit license as being a license issued to an individual operator, what's before you right now is more site-specific. The conditional use permit for that particular location and any conditions that might be in addition to the regulatory ordinance that are going to apply to that particular location. So there are two separate ones in play. But the first one, that the one the council's already adopted, does take into consideration those revenue-neutral aspects to it. Apart and aside from that, it is possible that there will be additional revenue that's not revenue-neutral, it's not designed to recover costs. It's simply revenue to the city. That could come in the form of sales tax revenue. Sorry. It could also come in the form of additional special taxation that the voters may approve in the future specifically on these types of businesses. But those would not be to offset anything, those would simply be revenue.
Yeah, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
I noticed that the WLC, World Logistics Specific Plan Area, is not an area that allows any kind of cultivation, use, distribution, testing. Is that something that is potentially amended in the specific plan for that site of, that part of town? Or is, that part of town is a pretty big part of town, and it looks like it's excluded.
Yeah, that actually is in a, one of the specific plans that does not defer over to the municipal code. They have their own individual regulations and permitted uses in that specific plan. So in order for that to open up would be, the applicant would have to come in and would have to actually modify the specific plan. It would be a specific plan amendment to allow for that type of a use if this ordinance was, you know, was passed. So they would, it doesn't defer to the code. So it would have to, they would have to look at their own specific plan and see what can be done. And that would be a specific plan amendment to allow for that use.
Okay. Thank you for that one. Is the permitting process to allow the dispensaries and other facilities, is that a standalone permit, meaning that store has to be dedicated to that use? Or could say Target or Walmart or any other existing facility apply for a license to sell?
The answer is that the cannabis activity requires a conditional use permit. If an operation like Target wanted to come in and carve out some aspect of Target and say that this is an area we want to dedicate for a cannabis activity, we would evaluate it based on the zoning in which it is and based on the proposal that is made. And then it would also have to go through the regulatory commercial cannabis licensing process. And it would also have to go through a state licensing process. And so it would have, it would basically have to go through all the same steps. But we did not make a distinction in this ordinance that's before you that it would have to be a standalone business. I think a general presumption is that most of them will be standalone. We probably have a dispensary operating on its own, cultivation facility or manufacturing facility that's operating on its own. A testing facility is one of those other areas, it's kind of a gray area. I've talked to some other jurisdictions where the testing that's being done, there's all kinds of testing that could be taking place because it's kind of a laboratory. And they may add the commercial cannabis testing to one of the things that they do as an operation. So that's probably the more likely area that a testing lab would come in and do something in addition to cannabis. But I don't really imagine a Target or another shopping, but this is all new, so I don't know.
So it's a gray area that's going to be?
That would be a gray area, but it would also be evaluated based on the limit that we've had. So if we've had twenty-six permits issued and each of the categories has been used up, if somebody comes in and wants to add it to a Target or add it to a, another
Things, yeah.
kind of shop of some sort, it would still have to go through the same process.
Okay. Now, since you mentioned the number, the permit limit number, what is the process? Say all of our permits are sold, they're all occupied, every single one of them. Is there a waiting list? Say I want to come in and own my own shop, but all of them are used. And would I come in to be the first on the list? Would it go for X amount of months or years? Or is it a random lottery that you come in to apply for a permit and there just happens to be one available, you get it?
So there's a couple of things happening here. As the City Attorney identified, there's a commercial cannabis business licensing process that will be done separately. What's in your purview this evening is the discussion about the conditional use permits. So the conditional use permits, we could get an application for thirty conditional use permits. They could all come in, they could be evaluated. All thirty of them could be approved. But then only twenty-six of them would be authorized as they go through the other process as long as they clear the hurdle to get the commercial cannabis license. And as long as they get the state license, only twenty-six of those thirty CUPs that were issued would become effective. Now, a conditional use permit, as we've discussed with other projects that come before you, has a life of thirty-six months. So that CUP would be good for thirty-six months to be exercised upon. And if during that thirty-six months, the applicant decides that they want to continue the life of that, there's a provision in the code that allows for those sorts of permits to be extended. So it's to get an extension of time for another three years. And so if their slot hasn't opened, I guess somebody theoretically could try and keep their conditional use permit active until the point where they do have a slot. But it's not guaranteed just because you've got a CUP that you'll get a license. Hope that's clear.
Yeah, I think Rick mentioned, I mentioned the two, the city has two. But there's also a state license requirement here, too. So you need all three licenses to operate, the state license, the city license, and the CUP. The CUP is only about the particular site that we're locating on. So a lot of the concerns you have are important invalid concerns that have been addressed and looked at in both the state and the city's licensing, but aren't part of the land use regulations that are in front of you tonight. So that's where there's, I know there's a lot of questions that you have that are or potentially are answered in the state and the regulatory licenses. But that's where they would, that's where they would be addressed, not here as far as the locations where these would go.
Well, what my concern is, is that I don't believe we have a maximum number of liquor stores or smoke shops, but we'll have a maximum number of cannabis industry facilities. So we haven't really experienced a maxing out of permits yet. This would be the first, in my knowledge, CUP that could max out. So say all twenty-six permits are used, we're testing, micro business, distribution, all that and cultivation. Say somebody does come down the line after all twenty-six are consumed or used. What's the process? Is there a waiting period? Do you just put your name on a list? Is it a lottery? Say somebody quits, the business fails, they go out of town, now there's twenty-five or twenty-six? And so who governs who gets that last one? Is it just first come, first served?
So on the, on the CUP, a similar process where things are regulated based on a certain number or maybe a saturation is ABC licenses. So some of our uses that require a CUP because they're going to sell alcohol, you may have seen that kind of discussion where the applicant comes in, and I think we had one here just a couple of months ago, where we have a condition of approval that says you've got a conditional use permit that's approved, but that conditional use permit alone does not allow you to sell alcohol in this establishment. You still have to secure your license through ABC. If you're not able to secure your license through ABC because it's an over-concentrated area and they're not willing to issue a permit because they haven't got a determination of convenience and I can't remember the word right now, but it's a necessity and convenience. So if you don't get that finding, you may not get an alcohol license. But you still have a valid CUP. And that valid CUP is running with the property and allows that business owner to try allows that business owner to try and secure the other licenses or approvals that they would need. So that would be similar here. Like I said, you could have maybe 30, maybe 40 people who come in and want to get CUPs issued for cannabis activity. We could be bringing them all before the planning commission, planning commission could look at all of them, and there would be a condition of approval imposed on those, in theory right now is what we're thinking through, that in order to operate that business, you'll still need to get the commercial cannabis license approved through the city, and you'll also have to get the state license, and those will become the conditions of approval associated with the, the CUP.
So the limiting numbers on the city business license, not the CUP. The CUP, we theoretically have an unlimited number of CUPs that can condition someone to potentially sell this product, but the 26 is on the other side on the city business license.
That's the way it's written, yes. It says a maximum of 26 businesses with approved conditional use permits for commercial cannabis activity will be allowed to operate in the city at any one time.
Gotcha. I misunderstood, I had it the other way around. All right. I also noticed that the micro-business is the only business that has a size limit of 10,000 square feet. Are the other facilities and industries size...
The commercial, the commercial cana, uh, commercial cultivation of cannabis is also limited by the state. Our understanding of the regulations to date and what we've written into our code limits the cultivation canopy to 22,000 square feet. So, and that's, that's tied to the state. So tho, those regulations that we put in there are trying to reflect what the state regulations are. If the state regulations change, our code would still stay what it is unless, unless they come back and we change the code, but right now...
The 22,000 for cultivation is the...
22,000 is the maximum size.
We're not going to get a 400,000 square foot site, huge warehouse coming in, manufacturing all the cannabis for the entire country.
So that, that's a, an interesting question that we've, we've kind of wrestled with. It depends on how that 400,000 square foot facility is separated with the mizing walls and stuff. So somebody could come in, if you can get in, if you can get separate licenses approved and, and carve up the space, so to speak, so that you're still consistent with our regulations and the state regulations, you could have some concentration or consolidation of that.
All right.
So that, that's a possibility, but we, we don't know how that's going to play out yet.
And state licenses are issued, one per individual, so you can't have a company come in and open up four different ones. But you could have six different people with separate licenses that we place in under a single large roof, that's possible.
Okay. I have a few more, but I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, then let's move it forward to the public hearing. And our speakers, just, we have just the one, Rafael Brugeras.
Rafael Brugeras, please.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, Staff, Residents. What a topic that we're all learning at one time. I want to answer Mr. Sims' question about this, Joe. If we're only giving license in the state of California and Arizona or Nevada or any neighboring state does not have the same laws, marijuana crosses that line, I guess that's against the law. That's a federal law, because now you're taking something that no one else wants. So that might be a something. The other federal law is, we don't know if they can come down from Washington and bust the warehouse down the street, because that's federal law. Okay, there's the, the gray side of it, that can happen, okay, because they have power over the state, okay? Federal law, okay? Those are things that can't happen, okay? We mentioned the World Logistics Center tonight. God forbid that Edo was standing right here and would apply to, to, to manufacture marijuana on his property. This building would be full right now, with hundreds of people, but not nobody, but nobody here tonight is here to fight against marijuana. None of them are here tonight. Those are hypocrites, because you could have large buildings instead that produce revenue and jobs and safety. But you know what? I hope tonight you will prove it, because the voters of this city want it. We want what they want. I want you to prove it tonight. So the opposition that comes here later, I want to look at them in their face and wonder why they went out here tonight to fight or ask questions. Nobody. That's how this city, we have two faces in this city, okay? But I know Edo Benzini, I know his character, I know his heart, he would never stand up here and ever do that, because that's not the kind of man he is. That's an honorable man, and people ridicule him for what he wants to do for the better. See, see, look at the evil and the good tonight, people. Tonight you get to see, tonight you got to see it and feel it. Between good, manufacturing warehouses, technology, and now we're talking about a field that we've never been in. But that's okay. Vote on it. I want you to vote on it tonight and allow the staff, because they're looking out for us, they're doing their very best to make sure that we don't get hurt. Please, pass it tonight, and let's do what we should have been done in the first place.
Our speakers will close the public hearing, and we'll now begin deliberations. Anyone want...
I personally don't understand the, the two-step process of, maybe it's just because of the authorities between, you know, the differences and authorities between what the city council can, you know, approve with ordinance and, and whatnot with the title, Title V and versus Title IX, the purviews of what the planning commission do versus the city council. It would have seemed though that, that there should have been Title V prior to approving and regulate, giving the city authorization to regulate and go forward with, with, with this cannabis activities, that they would have had the supplemental Title IX analysis to done to confirm that, that this was really something that the city is ready to do. And, but anyhow, that's new to hear, I, I suppose. I, I, you know, it's not for me to say, you know, what the state, what's right and wrong. I, I personally have a, a belief that if the federal law says it's not legal, I, I don't know, I have a hard time approving it. I, I, I personally do. I, it's just a, there's a lot of other cities that want to take the risk and, and go ahead, and maybe it's not a risk, but to go, to go forward and approve things and allow businesses to come in, the state will license them and conditional use permits and so forth and so on, it gets authorized, but, you know, Jeff Sessions could come down and say, "That's it." And all the money and effort, you know, that's at risk for those applicants to do that. But anyhow, philosophically, it just seems that there's a, there's a public policy issue that isn't settled for the entire country on this, and I don't know.
I, I've always been one to believe that pot should be legalized, and we should tax the heck out of it and make a lot of revenue out of it to help balance our budget and fund some city projects and city facilities, state security, state police, federal budgets. However, I don't believe that we are up to the enforcement. I don't believe that enforcement is up to, up to par to actively regulate consumption of it. When I was walking districts last year and the year before, or not districts, but walking neighborhoods for the district, you would be hard-pressed to find a residence or a neighborhood that didn't have pot smoke coming out of the windows. You walk around and it smells, you can smell it everywhere. My concern with legalizing marijuana is, or it's already legalized in this state, but my concern with it is that unlike alcohol, if somebody wants to have a beer or glass of wine or some hard alcohol, you can do it and consume it yourself, and somebody standing right next to you can't be adversely affected by it, by you consuming it. However, if you are at home smoking marijuana and you have a three-year-old like I do, they could get a contact high, they could get, they could get high just by being in the room with you, and that kind of scares me. Yesterday, we had a, a minor driving a car high, drove over a child near Vista Verde Middle School, and the kid more than likely will lose his leg. I do not think that our level of enforcement is up to snuff to allow, regulate, or to allow distribution in the city. I don't think that the enforcement is up to what we are trying to do today. I'm in line with Mr. Sims over here that I don't think that it's the right time to do this.
Well, I, I for once disagree with you. I looked through all these regulations for the building of these, the landscaping that they can't have, that this, that. There's so much thought that went into this document to prove that it's not just throwing out a dispensary out there. The regulations are amazing. I don't know who would want to have to do this, to be honest with you. There's so many hoops you have to jump through, and I have to commend the city staff on really buttoning this up. I, I thought it was incredibly thorough, I think it's a viable business, the, the people of the state have voted on it, other cities are doing it. I think you've done a phenomenal job of outlining this. It's not saying that we're going to get all these dispensaries, it's not saying we're going to have all of this, it's, we're going to say, anyone that wants to start this kind of business, like any other business, would have the opportunity to do it. And as much as we do smoke shops and we do all these other things, this is a viable business, and it's a new business, and they've certainly buttoned it up with the regulations. I spent hours going through those, and I was really impressed, and I don't know how much time you did, but lots, lots of time on that document. So I, I am going to vote to approve it.
Please don't misunderstand me, I do agree that city staff did a phenomenal job. This, what's before us tonight is absolutely, it, it's rock solid. I really think you guys did an amazing job.
You know, I think we definitely need to regulate this. This is here whether we like it or not, and, and I think the city did, the staff did a phenomenal job on putting this together, so I, I'm, I'm in favor of, of getting the regulations in place to do it.
With that said, do we have a motion? Unless there are any more comments. Mr. Baker?
Okay, a move that we approve resolution 2018-11 and also 2018-12, and thereby certify that this item is exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA as Class 32, Cal Core exemption, and SEQA Guidelines, Section 15332. I got the wrong deal, don't I? Let me, I, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, let's try it again. Okay, we're going to, I'm sorry about that. Recommend that the staff rec, or let's go this way, the planning commission approved resolution 201809, and thereby recommend that to that, the city council find that PEN 17-0157 Municipal Code Amendment for Commercial Cannabis Land Use Regulations qualifies for an exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act per provisions put forth in Senate Bill 94 Medical and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act exempting adoption of an ordinance and rule of regulation by local jurisdiction that will require subsequent discretionary permits, license, and other authorization. And also approve the proposed amendments to Title IX of the City Municipal Code, PEN 17-15, I'll check that, PEN 7-015, setting forth the Land Use Zoning and Development Regulations for Commercial Cannabis and Land Use Activities included in Exhibit A and Exhibit B.
I think that should be PEN 17-0157.
Okay. Um, and let's see, it's the second time I read it wrong, or...
I think you're good now.
It's okay, as long as we have the resolution number correctly, that's sufficient for your motion, as, as long as everything under there is what you're wanting to approve.
Right, yeah, I got it, sorry.
Okay, I can second that. Call for the vote.
So, so that vote is a tie, and in the, in the occurrence of a tie, the motion fails. So your options now are, you can come up with a, another recommended action if you want, and you can vote on that, or the action that's been taken this evening is an action that would have to be appealed in order to go to the city council. We can go into some clarification on that if, if the city attorney would like to, to help me with that, but when, whenever a amendment to the, the zoning provisions of our code are acted on by this planning commission, and if the action is a recommendation to disapprove, and you didn't take an action to disapprove, but the effect of your vote is not carrying it forward, that's why I need some clarification from the, the attorney.
All right, it's a, it's a unique special language. We had this once before in a different case where we have different language in the case of a non-approval. We want to make sure we get it right this time, so my recommendation, we'd take a short five-minute recess maybe, and then come back so we can look at the code and make sure we're doing, following the right procedure on this one.
Okay, why don't we reconvene at nine o'clock? And we're called back into order.
Good evening, Vice, Madam Vice Chair. So I, I looked at a couple of the options here, I want to make sure I had them clear, because the action that was taken was actually non-action. There was a motion to make a recommendation of approval. The motion failed to pass. However, that is not the same as a motion for disapproval passing, and our code speaks to what would happen under the event of a motion for disapproval passing. It says that the result becomes final and becomes an appealable action. That's the ci, that's the situation we encountered last year, as you might recall. That's not what happened this evening, in my opinion. We just had a, a motion that failed, that's a non-action. If it were to be left at that, the city council would be advised of the results of tonight's hearing and would move forward and take appropriate action based on that non-recommendation and based on whatever testimony and hearing that they receive on that date. So that's one option here before you. There are always the options for alternate motions. There are, I looked at whether or not we were, had a motion for reconsideration available to us. We do not, because that can only be made by a member in the prevailing majority. We had no prevailing majority tonight. So the only other option, if you did want to move forward with anything tonight, would be to reopen the, the public hearing. You could take some additional testimony, some additional information. We may have some additional information that may be helpful to the members of the commission that might help sway their votes one way or the other, and then a new motion could be made at that point. But you would open up the public hearing and take additional testimony in order to do that. With those options, I kind of leave it in your hands to decide how you want to move forward.
So tonight's action is ultimately a recommendation to the city council for them to take a final action on?
Staff, staff is looking for your recommendation for the council to take final action on later, at a later time.
Okay.
However, if this board was to recommend disapproval, that would be, in that rare circumstance, that would be a final action of this board, and would need to be appealed to the council in order for the council to hear it, or for the council to take it up on their own jurisdiction.
I, I don't know that we're going to have a majority vote on any item.
I don't, from just, go ahead.
So, you know, I, I don't know if we, how far we should deliberate or whatnot with that. I have two substantive issues for why I voted no. One was, one, one issue is not as substantive as the other. The first one is the non, the, just an issue is the, the divergence between federal law and what the state of California has done. I can get my mind wrapped around it, because the city, and the answers that were given, the city assumes no risk of that. That's the individual business applicant, and if they get into a business and Jeff Sessions and his guys come and say, "Oh, you're done, you're done."
and Jeff Sessions and his guys come and say, "You're done, you're done." And that's, that's their, that's the risk. The other, to me, the more substantive issue, and I fully understand that what's in front of us, with Amendment of Title IX, is more land use and site-specific for the specific uses of this proposed cannabis activity. To me, I just, as a commissioner, I don't disagree that this is a highly regulated, is outstanding job done in setting up regulations for this particular activities. My concern is, is, and if I, I would like to hear more testimony from staff about the effort they went in when the Title V Amendment went to council, indicating that there is economic benefit to the city sufficient enough that it would support any and all staffing, whether it's code enforcement, or the PD that would have to regulate and enforce and take action for this. You know, we're looking at something here. Council's approved, as far as to regulate. It's coming to us to site, specify for entitlement process. I just haven't, in my, maybe I missed it in the presentation, but I did not see it in the staff report. My ears didn't hear it, or, you know, pick it up. What is the fiscal responsibility to city that it's going to be at least cost neutral? That the benefits aren't outweighed by the costs? So, that's kind of where I'm at.
So if you'd like to obtain that information and consider it in your deliberations, the Vice Chair would need to reopen public testimony. Staff could provide whatever additional information they would need. You would then reopen up public testimony. The public would then have a chance, once again, to comment on any of the new information. Close public testimony, re-deliberate, and make a new motion.
What is your pleasure? Who would like to?
I would like to hear, hear the additional information.
Okay, as long as one person wants to hear it, I think let's reopen the public hearing on this.
Let me, let me try and address the questions that Commissioner Sims brought up. Again, I want to preface it with, the information we're going to be providing is information that will ultimately be going to the City Council with regard to the fees that will be assessed on the commercial cannabis permit. But it is tied to the land use regulations. And so we've been working very close between the Community Development Department, the Finance Department, the City Attorney's Office, to make sure that Title V and Title IX modifications work together. With regard to the fiscal questions, for example, the conditional use permit fees. The conditional use permit fees that will be assessed to this particular activity is going to be based on the conditional use permit fees that we already have on the books. So it's approximately $11,000 in terms of a fee. There's the $3,000 potential deposit that has to be made for the environmental analysis and that subsequent action. And then there's miscellaneous posting and public noticing fees. And then there is some water quality and hydrology study, depending on what type of activity. Those fees are intended not to make the city money, but they're intended to cover the cost of the service that's provided to issue the conditional use permit, to do the review, the analysis. It comes up between, I believe, $16,000 and $18,000 is what that element of a cost would be to an applicant. On the commercial cannabis permitting side, similar. The analysis is based, in part, on the total number of permits that we're recommending. So looking at 26 permits, our Finance Department has looked at that and tried to evaluate how much more police service would be necessary for that. What type of possible code enforcement services would be need for that? What will the cost of those additional staffing be needed? And I think that's what you were alluding to earlier. There is also the administrative costs that are associated with processing. And so there are, there are different components to that fee structure. And that fee structure, I don't have the numbers before me, but I can tell you they are fairly substantial. In one of the line items alone was somewhere between $30,000 and $50,000. I believe another one was like an $8,000 or a $9,000 fee. And these are in addition to the CUP fee. So there was, there's these line items in there that have been factored in, again, based on the total number of permits we would issue, based on how much law enforcement services we would need. And then on top of that, these applicants would have to pay the fees to the state. So they are substantial fees. And so when we assess those fees, we also have to look at recovering our cost, and then also making sure that it is something that will generate the type of business activity. And so we believe that the fee structure is consistent with all of those factors. And that's about as much information I can give you. If you need more, and sorry, the other thing that's important, on the commercial cannabis permit, different than the CUP. The CUP is a permit fee that is only one time when you get the CUP. But the commercial cannabis licensing fee will be an annual fee. So that substantial fee will be paid every year, because the cost for services will be borne every year. We'll have to have, if we have to have a police officer, police officer isn't there just for the first year. He's for the second year, third year, fourth year, and so on. So I hope that provides more information to you. If you want any more detail, and you want those specific line item numbers, I can tell you what those draft numbers are as of today. But again, that, that final number will be something that the City Council will consider, based on what the action here is today. In terms of the total number stays at 26, the number is likely to be exactly the same, unless some additional information comes. But if you change that number, then we may have to adjust those fees. So that's what I can share with you here. So besides the permitting fees, and the annual permit fees, and so forth, and whatever those costs are, and I get the, there'll be a suite of costs that has to be borne upfront annually, to just do, as part of the business expense for the individual property owner or the business owner. It does, as far as with the projections that the city has done, is, how's the revenue generated? Is it through sales tax? And is it through, that goes to the state, and the city gets a certain percent? Or how is that? The other revenue stream you're talking about with regard to taxes, the discussion that has occurred so far is that the city would likely be putting together a ballot measure that would have to go before the voters, and the voters would have to actually vote on a tax. So that's an additional revenue that has not been set yet. And it, I really can't give you much more information than that. I'd have to defer to our Finance Staff to figure out how much revenue would be generated. But that would be above and beyond recovering those, the costs for our services. We can't, we can't make money on all the other fees we're talking about. We just have to be able to have full-cost recovery with the fees I've described. The taxes is additional money that the city would generate that could go into the general fund and can be used discretionary.
And without a vote, the city will still be getting, no matter what, its regular sales tax income that it gets on any sales in the city.
So the sales, the tax that, the, or, wait, go ahead.
I was just going to add, Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager, City of Moreno Valley. There, there will be sales tax on those items that are eligible for that, that the city would participate, like any other commercial business. So there is a commercial, or a commercial sales tax component that would be added to that. Also, with the business permit that Rick was mentioning earlier, there's also some fees built in there for auditing purposes that we will take ownership of to make sure that the businesses are in total compliance with the business permit portion, along with the CUP process. So I wanted to add those, those two items for you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open this up again to public comment. Do we have anyone?
We have three. We have Orlando Montanero, Rafael Burgueras, and Alfie Hernandez.
Okay, let's start with Orlando Montanero, please.
Planning Commissioners, thank you. I've been a member, a resident of the city for 18 years now. And I've seen the city go through different cycles. When March Air Force Base closed down, the city was economically depressed. It's coming back. I see this as an opportunity for the city to bring in more revenue. There's been a lot of missed opportunities in the past by the city, and it's here to stay. It's been passed by the state. It's not going anywhere else. It's time for us to take, take the bow by the horns and say, "Okay, it's here, it's, it's us, or our neighboring cities. Why not us? Why not bring the money into our city? Why not increase our code enforcement? Increase our fire department, or our police departments? Get more people on the staff." City Council's on board. But most importantly, and this is where I think Mr. Sims and Mr. Lowell, you have to take this under consideration. It's been passed, and it's been put before the voters, and it passed overwhelmingly. If you vote against it, you're voting against the will of the people of this city. We voted for this. We want it. Keep that in mind when you're making that decision, when you, when you have another chance to vote on this. It's, the decision's been made by the people. That's who you're here to represent. You're here to represent us. And we've spoken loudly. And as far as your concerns about taxation and regulation, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the state guidelines for licensing. They're overwhelming. I, I wouldn't want to go through it. It's like 500 pages, or even probably closer to 1,000 pages of regulations. It is the most cumbersome industry that you could get into, the most highly regulated. The city ordinance, you know, alone is, is a little bit overwhelming for someone who wants to undertake this. So you have to take that into consideration. This is the most highly regulated business in this entire state. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montero. Rafael Burgueras, please.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Staff, residents, and guests. The one thing that it gave me an opportunity to think about, what you said, and what he said, and what she said earlier, and how she recommended how the staff was doing. You know, the one thing that Moreno Valley is going to have advantage over is Colorado, because we're going to do it right. Colorado make mistakes when they shot it out, and they learned the lesson the hard way. A lot of people got hurt. They should have figured it out before they allowed that to be suspended out in their state. Their mistake is our victory in Moreno Valley. Our staff has done a heck of a job to prove to me, of one of 210,000 people that live in our city, that they're going to do the right thing. Now, you're going to have an opportunity in the future to set things in motion when it comes to the taxes, or allowing people to come into our city to do business. You have an opportunity to set things. Because remember, one thing that Rick mentioned, gray areas, I don't know, because it's new. But you're going to have a chance to make it right. All 70 use, when they, hopefully next month, there will be all 70 use up there, to make it right. But today is only four. We're going to take the tax money, and everything that the state gives us back, to make sure they recover their money, our money, and that we have money put aside if it gets bad enough that we hire deputies, additional deputies, to help us in our city with a problem, if it becomes a problem. But if we stay strong as a city, and we follow our laws, we'll have less problems. Really, we will. So let's be strong. Let's pass this. Let's get it through, so we can go to the next step. Remember, you have the power in the future to say yea or nay, or ask more, more, more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Burgueras. Next, we have Alfie Hernandez.
Good evening, staff. Good evening, Commission. My name is Alfie, and it seems like everyone is talking about the economic standpoint of this argument. But what about the medical aspect? I'm a former veteran, United States Marine Corps. Got out of the Marine Corps with multiple sclerosis. And this is, I've been on, I was on Avonex, which was an interferon for a very long time. And I started receiving more adverse side effects from the Avonex, which was prescribed to me by our federal government. Then I came across cannabis. And cannabis helped me dramatically. The side effects of the Avonex prohibited me to go to work on Monday mornings, because the side effects lasted almost 72 hours. With my cannabis, which is a natural medicine, I was able to medicate every day, still function at work, and still be a father. Under Avonex, I wasn't able to. We used to have a little ritual before I took my shot every Friday, that Dad was going to be sick for two days, because I would get, my side effects would be fever-like symptoms. So I understand the economic aspect of the city, which is, which is a plus. But there is a lot of patients out there in which this medicine is helping. And by being in these areas, I'm sure there will be easy access for these patients to get this medicine. Now, I have, or had, children that were opiate addicts. If it wasn't for cannabis, which helped them get them off of opiates, this is a historic, and not only that, a medicine that is helping thousands of people across our country, maybe millions. We're not even talking about the world. So please consider your decisions. I understand there is an argument regarding federal prohibition. Well, there was an alcohol prohibition, and we knocked that down state by state as well, just like we are doing today. I know there was a concern about smell. The state has regulated that. I think all the businesses have to have some kind of air purification system, so like that its neighbors cannot smell the cannabis floating through the air duct systems. So there are some, some places in, 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 in place right now that will help out with these concerns. But most importantly, let us give the rights to the people of California who voted for this. And let's keep the federal government out of our business. I'm sure they got bigger and better problems that they can handle at the moment, as we speak. But right now, let's let our state handle it. And as the attorney of our city addressed, it's not really a municipal issue, and we're far from that. The state can handle that. And I'm sure Jerry Brown is ready for the federal government if they decide to come in our country, in our state. And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. If there are no more speakers, we'll close this portion of the, of the hearing, and we'll go once again into deliberation. If there's no deliberation, I will...
Well, I, like I said, I, I, like I said, I have two issues. First was the federal. That, I can get past that. Now, as far as the, I appreciate the additional information about the, about the economics of this. It's so, kind of repeating what I think I heard was, is that the, the permitting process and so forth, that's going to be implemented by the city, and the annual licensing fees to retain a business license for this, for the cannabis operations will be substantial. And that, that between those expenses, there's been an analysis that's been done to look at the cost side for staffing, and whatever enforcement costs are, that they'll be covered. And then potentially opportunities, if there's a special tax or whatnot, that the city, if that goes before a vote, would, would put additional revenues, you know, if needed, to support enforcement of the regulations. So anyhow, those were my two main concerns. I think they've been addressed.
So would someone like to make a motion?
Okay, I move that we approve resolution 2018-09, and thereby recommend that the City Council find that PEN 17-10157 Municipal Code Amendment for Commercial Cannabis Land Use Regulations qualifies for exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act per provisions put forth in Senate Bill 94, Municipal and Adult Use of Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act, exempting... Safety Act exempting adoption of an inordinance rule or regulation by the local jurisdiction that will require subsequent discretionary permits, license, and other authorization. Then also approve the proposed amendments to Title IX of the City Municipal Code, PEN 17-0157, setting forth land use zoning and development regulations for commercial cannabis land use activities included as Exhibit A and also Exhibit B.
And I will second that. Fall for the vote? Okay. Moving on, is there anything we need to say after this?
You know, the, the wrap-up on this one, this is a recommendation that will go forward to the City Council. We do have a tentative target date to get to the City Council, which would be March 20th. That would also be a properly noticed public hearing. And then the recommendation of the Planning Commission would be included in the staff report, and the City Council will be taking an action on that.
Okay, thank you. And moving along, other Commission business. Number four was taken off because we have people that have been appointed to the vacancies, and we'll move on to number five, the Planning Commission Action Minutes. And is there any discussion on this? I thought...
I liked it.
I liked it. I thought it was great. I don't like reading all the ahs and ums and all those things and the 20 pages of, you know, us thinking, and I think it's much more professional. I think it's easier for the public to read and get to the meat of it. So once again, I applaud you. I think it's a good idea.
Just for the record, Madam Vice Chair, I'd like to extend kudos to Ashley, who's new here at the city and been serving you guys well. One of the things I asked her to do was to look at how we could be more efficient, and really, her efforts in looking at this has been showcased, obviously, by your comments. She's worked closely with the City Clerk's Office, and we've also coordinated through the City Attorney's Office to make sure that we can change the format of the minutes. We've been using the verbatim minutes for a while. They do come at a cost because we have to take those recordings and give them to a transcriber. So one of the other benefits we're looking at is to try and reduce the cost but also meet the intent and interest of the Commission and the City Council, that they have information available to them, as well as the public will be able to see very clearly what actions were taken by this body. The other thing that we did highlight in the report that we gave you is that we will continue to videotape and record, audio-record each of your meetings. So in the event that anybody ever wanted to go back and get the level of detail that the verbatim minutes provide, that can be requested, and if they are requested, they can be specific to a, an item on the agenda rather than the entire agenda. So we think that we have all those options available to you, so just wanted to make sure that's clear on the record as you consider this this evening. We'd like you to, to direct us to use the new summary format rather than the verbatim minutes, and if, if we do get that nod, we would be starting, starting to use those as of March, Ashley? Is that what we said?
[inaudible]
Right. So these minutes that you, for tonight's meeting, would still go through the verbatim process, but we would start in March.
Do, do any of you have any comments or questions? We don't need to do a motion. We can just do a simple vote, can't we, on this?
It's not even a vote item.
Not even a vote?
It's just for you to give direction.
Well, we have to make sure everybody, head nodding? Okay, it's a, it's a go. Ashley, it's amazing what you've done in the brief time you've been with us. Thank you. All right, moving on, are there any staff comments?
My only comment, actually, a couple of comments. You did mention the appointment of Planning Commissioners. The City Council did appoint four members. There was one who did withdraw their name, so there are three that were effectively appointed, two as alternates and one as a regular commissioner. It's my understanding and working with the City Clerk's Office that those three candidates need to go through the final steps, administrative steps, to get sworn in and do the appropriate checks and whatnot. If everything goes according to plan, we expect that they would be seated at your next meeting on March 22nd. The other thing is, I mentioned at the last meeting that we've brought Albert Armio on board. Albert is getting now acclimated to the second meeting here, and what I've talked to him about is that I'll probably be bowing out at some of the meetings in the near future. I will still attend from time to time on, on some of the more maybe complex or complicated issues, but you'll probably see Albert as the mainstay here for the next meeting.
Thank you. Do we have any Planning Commissioner comments? Nothing?
Good to be welcome to have a full dais up here.
Yes, it will. It will be, we haven't had that in a year.
We can avoid situations like tonight.
That's right. Okay, great. If there's nothing else, the meeting is adjourned at 9:34. To the next meeting on March 22nd, 2018. Thank you.